The meeting going.
Are we ready?
Yep.
Okay, welcome everybody to this joint work session of Parks and Rec Commission and City Council. I think I was gonna turn it over to Nick. Oh, there he is. We're here to receive a presentation from Huddle about the Mills Hill Master Plan. Nick, do you want to introduce these guys, ladies, ladies and gentlemen?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, thank you all so much for coming for the joint work session between Rec Commission and Council. We've got Huddle on the our consultant Mills Hill consultant team, which is on online. And we're really excited to walk through some of the concept designs here this evening. And not taking up too much time, I'm gonna toss it over to Holly and the consultant team.
Hey, thank you, everyone. I'm Holly Spok Torres. I'm the owner of Huddle, a very small, Anchorage-based landscape architecture and community engagement firm. We're excited to have this joint work session. It's the perfect time to bring you to brief you all and bring you up to speed on the project progress so far. Go ahead, Bree. The thing, the things we're gonna cover tonight, they're it's a little bit different than the agenda we had in your packet. All the contents there, it's just mixed up a little bit. We're gonna have the project team introduce themselves. I'm gonna go over the project schedule. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the project process that we've been using to work through getting to a Mills Hill Master Plan. Hunter's gonna recap the survey results. We had a really active and successful community and visitor survey. Bree, the designer on the project, she's gonna walk you through a range of trail and access concepts. We're gonna have some time for question and answer. We're gonna talk about next steps and Nick is gonna talk about an adjacent parcel just a little bit to bring to alert you to potential next steps. Okay, go ahead. Um, well, you all know who Nick is, so I'm not gonna have him introduce himself. You know me, I'm the owner of Huddle. I'm also a landscape architect, but mostly my role is public and community engagement. And then I'll have Bree introduce herself.
Yeah, hi, I'm Bree Kiefer. I am a landscape architect at Huddle.
Okay, and then I'll move it over to Dr. Hunter Holland.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. William Hunter Holland. I'm with Parks and People LLC, and we primarily engaged in stakeholder engagement via survey and interview, collection of that information, analysis, and then working with the team to interpret the findings.
Go ahead, Gabe and Christine.
Hi, I'm Gabe Travis.
I'm Christine Beal, and we are a family-owned and operated trail design and construction company out of Healy, Alaska. And we're working on the trail concepts in particular.
And then finally, we have an architecture firm on the team, too, Brian Meisner, who you all may know. Brian, it was important for us to have some consistency and continuity with the comprehensive plan update. So Brian Meisner is also on this team, but he's not here tonight. We didn't need him. All right, so a little bit about the schedule. We have the project broken down into five project phases. Listen and learn, envision, share, approve, and then the fun part, which is permitting and construction. We are the bulk, a huge bulk of the work was during the listen and learn phase. That's where we completed Hunter's work, the stakeholder interviews and the community and visitor survey. We did a big lift with an existing document review data collection site analysis. We had two Mills Hill Planning Committee meetings. We had one public meeting back in November. So that was, that was where we listened and we learned and we investigated the site. And we heard what people had to say about their initial thoughts on the site. That brings us to now where we're about, I would say halfway through the envision stage. It's where we took everything we heard and learned. And now we are starting to develop ideas about what that looks like on the site. Again, there'll be two more Mills Hill Planning Committee meetings. We'll develop the concepts, which you'll see tonight. We'll start narrowing those concepts down into a preferred concept. And then it was important to us to brief you here in a joint session. So yeah, we're right in the middle of the envision stage. After we have the ideas narrowed down to a preferred concept, we'll start sharing that. And that'll be around April. That'll be the next time you see us is in April. We'll have another Mills Hill Planning Committee meeting, another public meeting. And we'll share what we're calling the draft plan at that time. That will launch an official public comment period. And then we'll start moving the plan through an approval process after that public comment period closes. And then even as early as this summer, we hope to start building projects. It'll likely be phased and some of the shovel-ready, easier projects to get going quicker can be some of the first things that happen. But construction will be over the course of a few years. Okay, go ahead, Bree. So and then just to show you a little bit about how these things all come together and where we're injecting public input into the process. So survey results and stakeholder interviews plus the site inventory and analysis led to the addition of project guiding principles, which we'll talk about in a minute, and tons of public input and committee feedback. And then in that with that yellow, first yellow ball, the public input, that leads us to where we are today. So all this work so far has led to the development of these concept plans, which were, we've asked for public input already this week. And so with a range of concept alternatives that Bree is gonna talk through, what we're really trying to do is gauge what Valdez residents is it see as an acceptable level of development on the site? Like based on what you told us, are we getting it right? What is an, what are acceptable alternatives? What is the acceptable plan for the things that you want to see for Mills Hill in Valdez? So that's what we're asking for, that second public input bubble, that's where we are now. Yep, and then we'll move it to the draft master plan for more public input. And we'll listen again and then finally get to the final master plan. Okay, go ahead, Bree. Now I'm gonna, I think it's important to recap what we heard for the survey from the survey, because it drives so much of the concepts that you see today. So go ahead, Hunter, I'll let you talk through this, these two slides.
Thank you, Holly. So in order to pursue the development of a master plan that addressed stakeholders' needs, visions, and concerns, we initiated a data collection period during fall of 2020. This aimed to gather and interpret critical input. The process will use diverse and practical methods and was driven by five exploratory questions. Those included, what if any, is the significance of Mills Hill for stakeholders? What are the desired uses of Mills Hill? What are users' preferences in the development of Mills Hill? What does both short and long-term success look like? What degree of support exists regarding the development of Mills Hill? So we'll show you a glimpse of our findings here. I will go over two quick slides. The first and the one presented currently shows community stakeholders' responses. Community stakeholders did add up to 83% of our total sample, so they were strongly represented. Community stakeholders indicated a degree of support for the additional development of Mills Hill for non-motorized recreational opportunities, and shared an exciting vision for an accessible nature-based park prioritizing community access and furthering the unique identity of Valdez. So select preferences for development, and this does, this is covering community stakeholders, would include opportunities for novel scenic views, environmentally conscious development, opportunities to freely explore and enjoy solitude, family-friendly recreational opportunities, and physically accessible options. Thank you, Bree. We'll look at the visitors' findings here. Regarding visitors, they desired a nature-based park connecting their experiences held while on Mills Hill to the existing Valdez infrastructure. And this would happen via time-efficient recreation opportunities, easy access to trails, connectivity to town, and clear and plentiful information. Ultimately, the investment of community stakeholders and visitors speaking with us and sharing a vision for Mills Hill was used to develop guiding principles and the concepts that our team will share with you this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Hunter. So I'm gonna review these guiding principles here. And it's gonna be a lot of the same words that Hunter just said. I just think it's important to reiterate all the listening we did with the 428 surveys, the stakeholder interviews, the community meetings, the committee meetings, that these are the things that rose to the top as things that were important. Okay, so degree of support. Valdez supports the development of Mills Hill with nature-based recreation amenities while conserving habitat. Okay, so first things, the significance of Mills Hill. It's an iconic landmark in your community, helps shape the public image of your city, and reflects the existing and future culture of the community. You'll see that represented. Desired uses. What you'll see in the next concepts prioritizes community access for a range of year-round, nature-based recreation activities inclusive of varying user abilities. And you'll see that very, we've tried to be very inclusive with all ages and abilities with the concepts that you'll see. Preferences, clear signage, opportunities for solitude. Hunter already said that. Engagement with a wilderness environment. There's a range of experiences shown in the next concepts. And then long-term success as as public officials, you constantly have to ask these questions. And we're working toward a plan that is responsible. It's developed with a long-term phase plan for sustainable maintenance and management. And the plan is oriented toward advancing the quality of life and experiences Valdez have to offer. So we're not only thinking about, you know, operations and maintenance, but we're talking about, we're thinking about quality of life. Okay, go ahead, Bree, thank you. Okay, now I'm gonna kick it off to Bree. And we know there's tons of information here, but one of Bree's strengths is simplifying it and helping you figure out how to navigate all this information. So Bree is now gonna go through the two trail concepts and the three access concepts.
Great, thanks, Holly, and thanks, Hunter. Yeah, so before I get into this specific concept that you'll see up on the screen, like Holly said, based on all that information we gathered in the surveys, our design team ended up coming up with what we're calling two trail concepts and two access concepts. And when we say access, we're speaking specifically of what is shown in this black box here. So, so how are people getting from Hazlet into the site? And how are we dealing with parking and drop-off? So first, I'm gonna go over the trail concepts, which don't deal with that area just yet. And then I'll go over those access concepts, so we can talk about those specifically. Before I get into the specifics of this one, I do want to orient people to the graphic itself. So Mills Hill Parcel is highlighted in a red property line with the green aerial in the back. You have Egan Drive to the north, Hazlet to the east, the water to the south, and Blueberry Hill to the west. For those of you who are familiar with the parcel, you're aware that there's that roughed graded in road that starts in Hazlet and then works its way all the way to the top. So you can kind of see it in here in the background. And then we have one of our trail lines that overlaps it and goes to the top points of Mills Hill. There's some things that I want to point out about the legend here on the left. We wanted to use a variety of concepts or concepts icons, icons here on the left to represent different amenities. So at the top, we kind of have the general year-round amenities you'd see on the site. And then uses broken down into winter uses in blue and summer uses in green. And then all the different trail types we're proposing. So I'll show you some examples of how to read the legend with the map. There, we're showing this main trail going through the center overlapping that road. That's that main multi-use trail that we show over here. And if you go to the call-out of the trail, it identifies which uses would be allowed on that trail. So in this case, it would be hiking, walking, mountain biking, wildlife viewing in the summer, and then snowshoeing, cross-country skiing, and fat biking in the winter. We also have images on the right to represent different trails and amenities. So in this case, image P3 is an example photo of what that trail would look like. So yeah, just to give you a sense of what, how to break down the graphic and the images in the legend. So with that, I'm gonna talk about the specifics of Trail Concept One, which we're calling the Multi-Use Spine with a hiking focus. So what we were really trying to achieve is providing a multi-use trail that uses that existing road running through the middle of the site, and then a variety of hiking and walking opportunities branching off from that multi-use trail. So that was really the, the goal of this concept. And so I'm gonna talk through several elements within kind of each of those trail branches. And we'll have some blow-up images here on the right. All right, so yeah, I'm just gonna talk through each trail type, oops, starting with some trail elements closer to Hazlet and then working across the site over to the Northwest. So starting near the entrance, the first trail experience coming off of that main road would be a universal, what we're calling a universal trail, the overlook trail. And when we say universal, what we mean is that it would be compact surface, likely compact gravel with a grade less than 5% and about six feet wide. So it would accommodate a lot of different users. We're also looking to provide a overlook platform opportunity right near the entrance so that users could have an immediate experience that they can experience views of the ocean and waterfront. And what we heard in the survey is that views were really important. So that's what we were trying to provide immediately. Next, we have that multi-use trail running through the middle of the site that I talked about a little bit ago. We're picturing that this would be about 16 feet wide, which would allow for a piston boli for grooming, for skiing in the winter. And so because that existing roadbed is much wider and some spots, we're picturing some revegetation in order to create a more narrow trail-like feel. And so that would run through that same routing of the existing road. Next, the loop that we're showing down along the south is what we're calling the Ocean Bluff Trail. And this would be a pretty narrow, maybe about a two-foot-wide trail using the natural surfacing. We would really try to weave it through the existing forest and avoid impacting any of the existing vegetation. We're looking at starting it over here across from the Universal Trail, bringing it along the ocean bluff and then looping back to that main trail again. And one thing we would do want to point out, there is an existing eagle's nest. So a portion of that trail will be dependent on getting eagle nest permit. And we've started working with US Fish and Wildlife to determine what, what we can do there. The next trail experience we're proposing in this concept is what we're calling the East Summit Trail. So although the existing road does bring you to some high points, we're thinking that this is actually one of the higher points and provides 360 views. So providing a nut, again, this would be a narrow trail that is more of a hiking experience that would cross somewhat areas of potentially having some boardwalk elements and then bringing people up to this other high point. And the site currently is being groomed and used for skiing. So we wanted to preserve one of the ski loops. And we are labeled this, we are labeling this area as a ski-only, winter-only trail. And then kind of the last element of this concept that we wanted to be sure and provide because of the results of the survey is a connection in the northwest. So another place that people can access the site besides the access on Hazlet. And due to kind of the steeper terrain along the north, the best possible routing we were able to find was coming off of that existing road and then coming down to the existing water tower road. So this would be a non-motorized access entry. Pedestrians could share the road with the water tower access and then a trail would branch off from there. Due to the grades and the terrain, we would need to overlap the adjacent university parcel. So we do make a note that an easement would be needed for that access point. Some other things that this blow-up points out is we'd have some small pedestrian trailhead at that junction. And then in general, we'd be looking to provide some simple wayfinding signage throughout the site at all trail intersections. And then I can go ahead and start going into Concept Two. Holly, do you want to open up for any questions?
No, let's get through Concept Two. I want to make sure we move along so that we have enough time at the end. So Concept Two will be a little bit repetitive, so let's make sure we're just moving through it.
Yeah, so this is Concept Two. It's called Expanded Bike Use and Expanded Trail Connections. So what you'll see is that we actually have a lot of the same trail types and trail connections that we showed in Concept One. But something we heard from the survey is that a lot of residents are looking for mountain biking specific experiences. So we wanted to provide a concept that emphasized biking and then also provided some specific use zones. So first, I'm gonna go over what's the same from Concept One, and then I'll talk about some of those differences. So in general, we still have that multi-use trail spine going through or overlapping that existing road. We still have the Universal Trail and Overlook near the entrance and the Ocean Bluff Trail. We're, in addition to what we showed before, we're proposing some platforms along this trail. So similar to what we showed at the entrance, these would be structures that would provide specific viewing opportunities. The other similarity is we still have the East Summit Loop. One difference is that the connection to the multi-use trail would be a shared trail, meaning bikers and hikers would share that connection. We also have the connection to the Northwest. And the addition in this concept is another hiking trail that provides a loop experience someone could have. And what's really cool about this one is that it's kind of a unique terrain feature that would allow for kind of a more intimate experience in some really neat terrain and wooded areas. So those are kind of the general things that match Concept One. But in terms of the differences, let's talk about in a second, the biking. So in addition to the first one, we really wanted to provide bike-specific trails. And what we mean by that is what's generally called kind of like single, single-track flow trails. And so they would be designed in a way that would accommodate mountain biking. They could potentially be used by other users like walkers, but likely it would really only draw bikers to those trails. And we have two specific areas. The first one is on the east, and it's about a quarter to half a mile loop. It would probably draw in a lot of beginners and be like kind of a good warm-up space for people. The next one is over here on the east, and this ends up creating about a two-mile loop option. So the idea is that someone could bike up this main multi-use path and then access these two different mountain biking experiences. And we've also identified these as fat biking trails in the winter. The other big difference in this concept is that we included a mountain bike skills park. And skills park can have a lot of different connotations with it. It can be anything from pretty simple structures to something more larger and kind of complicated paved structures. In this case, we're, we're more on the more natural, small, small infrastructure end of that spectrum. And here's some example photos, so rock features, wood features. And we are proposing it in an area that is, has existing impact. We thought that might be a creative way to reuse that area of existing impact and provide some alternative bike opportunities. So we could do question and answer and then jump into the, or go ahead and jump into the access.
Yeah, I'm gonna hold all the questions until we, after we get, because I think once, I think getting through the access will answer some questions.
Yeah.
Go for it.
I'm just gonna jump back again. The access concepts we're about to pull up are specific to this black box in the aerial. All right, so this is the, one of the graphics you guys have in your packets. And it highlights the three access concepts we're showing on, coming off of Hazlet. And what we were trying to provide was a variety of solutions that balanced, balanced, universal trail experience. So providing a trail that would meet that 5% grade standard while trying to limit our footprint. So trying to limit the amount of grading that would be needed to build something like that type of infrastructure. So I'll go through each one. But generally, Concept A has mostly off-site parking with some accessible parking near the entrance. Concept B has some off-site parking with an upper parking lot. And C is off-site parking, lower parking, and upper drop-off. And I'll go through each one. All right, so Concept A, off-site parking and lower parking. In this one, we are proposing that the main parking lot for Mills Hill be off-site at the Uplands parking lot. It's right across the street. There's already a lot of space there. So we're, we would anticipate the majority of people parking here. But in order to achieve accessible experience, we are proposing that a small parking lot of about three to five parking stalls and maybe space for drop-off. And these would be accessible parking stalls be provided just above the first switchback in that existing road. And the reason is that existing road has about an average grade of 9% up to, up to 18 in some spots. So bringing that level down to become accessible would be create a large footprint, using it as a road where people can start higher up for a universal experience does help reduce a potential grading impact. So from there, the, the rest of the road would be maintained as a multi-use trail. We'd also have a boardwalk structure element to bring people up to that overlook we talked about in Concept One and Two. So yeah, this one really emphasizes trying to create a universal experience from a small parking entry space. So Access Concept B is off-site parking with upper parking. Again, parking could happen off-site. But in this one, we are proposing a larger parking lot, maybe around 10 parking stalls in an existing area of impact. And what we were trying to achieve with this one is looking at ways we could use the existing footprint that's already on the site while still providing a universal experience. And what is conducive in this one is that that area of impact does tie in directly with this universal trail. So there wouldn't need to be large boardwalk structure, and the parking lot would fit within the footprint of that existing graded area. And again, I forgot to mention in the other one, in all these concepts, we are proposing kind of a variety of amenities, including And again, I forgot to mention in the other one, in all these concepts, we are proposing um kind of a variety of amenities, including. Uh, entry kiosk, covered shelter. In this case, the shelters are higher, whereas the previous one, it would have been down lower. Um, and here's an example photo about how big that type of parking lot might look. And then access concept C, off-site parking and lower parking with an upper drop-off. So this kind of combines. Uh, some of the aspects of both the previous concepts. So in this case, the main parking. Would be off-site with a small accessible area or accessible stalls near the entrance, very similar to concept A. But in this one, um, we are proposing that there could be a one-way road. Leading up to a drop-off area. So for the most, most of the time, the road would actually function more like a multi-use trail. But um if someone did want to use this upper area for drop-off, they could. Um, get a special use permit. Uh, Parks and Rec would unlock a gate and they could drive up and drop off. And um, we are proposing that this upper area still have the amenities. That we showed in B being the covered structure. So uh, we're kind of picturing this maybe used for educational opportunities with schools or maybe even tour groups. Um, so this one really combines the two first access concepts. So I think with that, we could open up to specific questions.
Yeah, um, let me, let's go through what we heard from the public so far, because I know as. Council members and commission members, you probably want to understand what the public is saying so far. So let's go through that and then we'll do question answers. Okay? Okay, so themes, common questions, common comments. Um, overall, there's general positive feedback regarding the variety of options. Um, I get the sense people are just kind of excited for the potential of what Mills Hill could bring to their quality of life. From an outdoor recreation perspective. So there's just this general positive feedback. Okay? Um, we got comments about vegetation preservation. People are, people care about the old growth. Trees and um we did get a lot of comments regarding that. In addition. Um, people forage on the site and they wanted to make sure that vegetation would be preserved. Positive response to increased biking opportunities. The third bullet, parking areas relative conservation easement. So. Um, as you all know, there's a conservation easement on the site between the city of Valdez and BLM. Um, that restricts uses on the site. Um, one of those is motorized vehicular. Um, so the public did have a lot of questions about what that meant and where it's appropriate to have parking on site. And I think a lot of people have strong opinions about cars and where they go on site. And that's. Typical of lots of public projects like this. So I think that um. Um, you know, right where we are right now is trying to figure out um an acceptable level of development on site. And we're really trying to listen to those comments specific to parking so that we get it right. So that's something to be aware of. Um, level of structures, what people think are important, whether whether we need vault toilets or we need a covered shelter. And we got that that's going to be a common theme. Um, and then whether it's the. Um, there's an interest in specific interpretive themes, whether it's the indigenous people who have been here for. Um, thousands of years or um meals in hazelot. Um, you know, there's a proposal for public art or um interpretive materials. And so people have a lot of questions about what that will look like in the future. Um, and these concepts do provide a blank slate for what that could be. Okay, the last thing I want to tell you is um and go ahead to the next slide, Bree. So there is, in addition to answering questions and giving this presentation, we have an online tool. For people to go through the concepts and submit um survey responses. Um, to give more specific feedback on the concepts. And so. As of, I don't know, two hours ago, maybe when we pulled the data, there were 23 respondents from last night, which was cool. And what we're seeing so far from a preference is that users generally are preferring trail concept two. That's where you see that blue horizontal bar. Um, there were, we also asked people if. Um, if they liked a concept and what changes they would want to see. Um, and there were some changes proposed. Um, not too many though, actually, but overall, like we we're seeing a definite trend here. The people, 23 people prefer to concept two. The access concepts were a little bit more all over the board. Um, I I think we predicted that people would like. A concept A, that's what my gut was telling me. And we're seeing like a slight preference for access concept A. Um, but overall, there's not as much of a consensus on the access concepts. Um, as we're starting to see with the trail concepts. So that's what we've heard so far. And I know you've gone a long time without being able to ask questions or provide comments. So now we're gonna do that. I just wanted to get it all out there first. Um, alright, so go ahead. Anybody have questions?
I'll go first.
Okay.
Brian, go ahead.
Okay, uh, Brian Teal, Parks and Rec Commission. My question is, what I'd like to see. You got your main trail, your main access trail, but I'd like to see a little more enhanced enhanced access. Off that northwest corner to the residential areas where the uh water tower road is.
Bree, can you go through a map, please?
Yeah, your white, your main trail turns into a black line trail.
Yeah, I'm gonna jump over to that graphic so you can take a look.
But I, I, and then you've got, you know, we got the Mineral Creek Ski Trail comes down. Onto Eagan and the Piston Bully goes right down Eagan. Now, from a maintenance standpoint, and what you've got, it'd be nice if when they're setting the trail, they could take that left. Up water tower, up the water tower road. And just go up onto the hill and set all the trail up there instead of having to, because I noticed your black line says no piston bully. Right there. In other words, and we've been talking about trail connectivity. It'd be nice if you could ski completely through onto the white line trail from the ski trail. It'd be nice if that was all one trail. Because right now you have it, it bottlenecks down to that black line. Uh. It, you're just kind of missing out on connecting your Mills Hill to the ski trail is what.
I think that that's a great question and Marcy brought up the exact same thing. Um. So we know that that would be an ideal scenario. And maybe Christine and Gabe can talk a little bit more about the terrain there.
Here's my question. Is it possible to provide connectivity with the piston bully on um on that black? Um, dotted line right now that says no piston.
Well, that's a good que- like you say, the terrain is steep in there. And I haven't been up there lately. Uh, it would, it would connect, it would connect one continuous trail instead of. You know, and set a bottleneck down to a non-improved trail there briefly. And especially your, your access from the residential areas. I mean, you got all those people. On that north side of Eagan.
Brian, let's give, uh, I think maybe Gabe and Christine a chance to respond or Holly.
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead, Christine or Gabe. Is it possible to provide that piston bully connection in that point?
No, it's, it's too steep over there to get a 16-foot wide trail suitable for piston bully access. Um, would really be, that's essentially like a road. And it would dramatically change the character of the environment over there. Um, there are a number of old growth. Sycamore spruce trees over there too, that um there's a real strong interest in preserving. Um, so, but, but the compromise, I think, you know, that, that dark line could be four to six feet wide and. Um, groomable with a snow machine with a drag. So there would still be ski connectivity. It just wouldn't be possible to get the piston bully all the way through the whole circuit.
And we do talk extensively with Marcy and with um Cole and some of the other employees who are involved in ski. Teaching and grooming up there. And although we all agree that piston bully connectivity would be awesome. Um, our, our analysis of the site and the amount of switchbacking you'd have to do to bring the grades down to have that be. Feasible would be such a huge visual corridor impact on a part of the site that has much more pristine feeling than most of the other site does.
Sure.
Decided in, in kind of in concert that that was not a trade-off. We wanted to propose.
Yeah, that's, that's a good, that's a good answer.
Yeah, um, and going forward to you guys, I'm just noticing we only have a little over 15 minutes left and we got a turnover for a regular meeting. So if. Commissioners and council members could just keep their questions and comments brief and give these guys a chance to. To get questions answered, that'd be appreciated. Thanks.
Okay, what other, what other questions might we have on the access or the trail concepts?
Yeah, Susan.
Bye.
Let's go on the phone first and then we'll go in the room. So um.
Sounds good. Who's on the phone? Alan?
No, it's uh James.
Jimmy, go ahead, James.
Um, so my uh, I, I guess I have a con-comment about uh my opinion. On, on the trail access. Uh, the only, the only problems, I actually, I much prefer trail concept two. With the expanded bike use. Uh, my only comment, the only changes that I would like to see. But I, I'd like to hear other opinions is the western bike. Trail that, that interrupts the natural wildlife area and comes very close to the existing water feature. I, I actually don't, uh, I don't even like that in there at all. I, I like to maintain the natural wildlife habitat. If possible, and the proposed trail pending uh eagle permit. Uh, in the, in the uh southern part near the, near the coast there. I don't see a reason for pursuing that either. I honestly, I, I think the map would be perfect if we just left those. Spaces natural. Uh, otherwise, I like everything. I especially like the eastern bike trail, the big loop and the uh. And the mountain bike skills course as well as the uh overlooks. The, the scenic, the, the, not, not the uh scenic view platforms, but the uh rather the um viewing platforms.
Thank you.
James.
Okay.
Susan.
This is uh Susan Love on the city council. I had a um kind of some questions about the access and parking. And um of the three, I'm definitely most in support of concept A, but. I'm curious about the, how you guys arrived at um. At that decision. And um what I'm really curious about is if you surveyed all of the facilities surrounding the parcel. That the city of Valdez maintains. I know we have a number of parking lots and restroom facilities on the Kelsey Dock and then the Civic Center facility. And also the viewing opportunities um on Civic Center Hill. And if there were equivalencies. Um, that might have weighted it, I mean, if you're looking at um. Accessibility for, for people to be able to, to get a similar view that um. And the reason I ask that is that, did you consider not providing any motorized use, like an option with no parking at all? And I was a little disappointed to see an option um that, that didn't include that. Um, by understand from what you're saying about the grade that you want to make sure that access was, was a primary concern. But um, did you guys consider all the facilities surrounding that?
Go ahead, Bree. Yeah, I think that's a great question. Um, yeah, we did um put consideration. We know that there's some nearby restroom facilities. Um, there are also other opportunities for uh those types of trail experiences and covered shelters. And while um. I guess another thing we're trying to balance is what, what we were hearing in the survey. So we did want to provide those amenities based on the results of the survey. Um, so that's why we do include all those amenities in, in each concept. But we are open to. Um, through this public comment process, we have received some feedback that people don't want to see those on Mills Hill. And we have received feedback that people do. So um, I think that's a great comment for us to consider as well. And getting back to the survey and those guiding principle themes that Holly did go over. We did hear that even if there are uh universal experiences elsewhere in Valdez. Um, we heard that it was important for having that on Mills Hill and that's why we. We did incorporate it into the options we wanted to share at this, at this point in the project. Um, yeah, does anyone want to add to that?
Um, uh, I, I could, uh, I, I'd like to comment on Susan's comment if that's possible.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
Uh, I, I agree with what Susan said about the uh parking and nearby facilities. Um, going into this, uh, I hadn't taken into consideration the 9% grade on the entry there. And that is a great point. I have spoken with elders in the community that while they are mobile, they have limited mobility. So uh, I understand the access concept for concept A. Uh, and I, I, I think, uh, again, I also prefer that. And from what it sounds like, so does the community and. And the other people that have commented. So I'm glad to hear that. Um, but, but yeah, I guess, I guess my question would be. Um, what, was there, was there any um supporting comments? That we should take into consideration for access concepts B or C?
So Bree, you have read in detail the um. The surveys that have been submitted for B and C. Is there anything notable about what you read in for B and C? Why people supported that?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't say um specific other than um. I think it is showing right now that A, A isn't necessarily outweighing dramatically those other options. But it is, it is the preferred, it's showing up as the preferred one so far. Um, so I think that will be interesting to see which option, um, if that continue, if that trend continues. And it, and it sounds like people here are preferring A, so that's good to hear.
Go ahead.
This is Susan. Again, just one more quick follow-up to that. Um, I am curious. Uh, I mean, did you guys consider what the feedback might be if, if we were given an option to vote for no parking on site at all? I mean, that's right now, we're, we're being kind of led with those three. So people who support concept, they might actually prefer to not have parking at all on there. So I just wonder if you're missing out on the opportunity to, to discuss that, the drawbacks. And maybe give people an opportunity to say, no, that's really not acceptable. And it might show up better in survey results if you're given that option.
I guess the only thing I'll come back to is that one of the primary things we heard through the survey is that people. Wanted inclusive access for people of all ages and abilities. And provide, not providing parking on site limits. It, it's a less inclusive option.
And Holly, this is Nick, if, if I may, um, as well that we've, along with interior and trails, there's a lot of conversation about. Could we grade that entry to the point where folks could walk in? I mean, could we make a separate trail to get them into the, into the property? Um, and when we talk about, you know, universal access in a sense, not necessarily ADA compliant, but. You know, folks that are less ambulatory. And so the idea to be one of the drawbacks to that and, and something that. Uh, as we were talking through, not having any, any vehicle access up that, that initial grade was that. The amount of work and grading to be done to, to get it to a point where you would reduce that grade enough to make it where it was accessible. Um, was really impactful to the property and not only impactful, but, but the cost would be quite high. So I know Gabe and Christine walked that area uh pretty extensively looking at is, is there another trail opportunity to, to, to meet that goal? And, and um, you know, through that conversation, it was. Said that it just really wasn't feasible to, to allow that to still meet that accessibility. Um, without, without trying to get that, that parking lot or that access up that initial, initial. uh without, without trying to get that, that parking lot or, or that access up that initial, initial hairpin turn there.
So, go, go ahead, Holly.
I guess just the last thing I'll say too is that um residents and visitors want um an experience on the site, right? Both do. And I think from um thinking about the opportunities for things to do that are close to your downtown, um, pro- providing that parking it allows more people to experience the site. So I guess that's the last thing I'll say.
Thanks, Holly. I just, do we want to move on to um the discussion of, oh, sorry, Susan?
I just want to say that your comments are all taken and we can move on to the next.
Yeah.
I just, I just know we need to hear from Nick about the adjacent parcel still. Right. Does anybody have any final comments or questions?
I guess the, the last thing I'll say is that I'd be happy to have another conversation about this if there's more we want to talk about. So like this doesn't have to be the last time we come here and talk to you. So I'd be happy to have more conversations. But go ahead, Nick. Let's talk about this because this is a big deal.
Thanks, Holly.
Sure. Thank you very much. So um, a short background on, on why this topic is being brought up. So while we were looking at uh the trail design for this, this property, as Bree had mentioned, um, in order to be able to connect down to the water tower road, uh, we were looking at, at the options to be able to connect that trail. And, and through that process, um, we reached out to University of Alaska because they own that, that parcel and talked about the potential for an easement. At that time, through that conversation, we were informed that UA had identified that, that parcel as one, as an investment property and that they were looking to uh, to list that property for sale. So we wanted to, to, to bring that forward and, and in that same line, since, you know, time is pretty trunkey, I just wanted to make sure to reassure council that, you know, from administration that any conversation about land is, is um, we certainly want to have a thorough conversation and intentional and, and create um, you know, a long enough runway for us to be able to have some, some conversation about that. And, and it's our intent that, that before really anything any decisions or anything are happening, we're, we're waiting for the comprehensive plan to be able to be adopted and, and have to see where that, that is um within that, that plan. So really this is just to inform council that um, you know, that, that parcel is, is coming for, for sale and, and that um uh, in, in the coming months. So really that's, that, that's what we wanted to make sure that we explained a little bit more why and what that easement is. And then to bring to the intention that the, that that parcel is, is for sale. And that it's a 86 acre parcel. It's just adjacent to Mills Hill. Uh, it, it stretches down, stretches down to the water, um, and then all the way back up to, to Eagan.
Thanks, Nick. Any questions or comments? Chair.
I have one question, uh, more process related. Um, if we do have additional questions that we want to ask or talk about, what's the best way to do that?
I'm wondering the same thing, actually.
Um, well, we could, I don't know, Nick, how do you want to deal with additional questions? We could have another time where we get together and talk, or you could submit questions to us. Um, I don't know, what's your preference? I'm, I'm so, I'm flexible. What do you want?
Are you, are you referring to the parcel or the, the plan?
Back to the plan, sorry. Yeah.
Sure.
Specifically, but comments or questions?
Yeah, absolutely. So um the mealsillmasterplan.com, there's um, there's that survey. There's also Holly's contact information or mine, if there's any feedback that, that we want to be able to to give specifically or any follow-up questions, you know, we certainly can bring it back as an agenda item for a recommission um, meeting as well in, in the coming months. And we'll be having, you know, more public engagement and more updates. But I think in, in, in the interim, anything that comes to mind, feel free to reach out to myself or to Holly. And we'll do the best to answer any, any questions and make sure the feedback's captured as we move forward and fleshing out which concept is, is the one that, that uh, to me likes the best.
All of the information in the presentation, is that already loaded to the website or will it be? Because it's a little bit more than.
You actually, it gives you a lot more and it's interactive and you can pull things up. I was on my last.
Okay.
It's great.
All right. Any uh final questions, comments? Holly, Bree, Gabe, Christine, Pete, go ahead.
Maybe we have another meeting. There's definitely some really contentious stuff here. Is on? Thanks, Susan. So yeah, Holly talked about maybe another meeting. I'm wondering about the planning committee. Is that the right place for people to get more involved? Because this is the first time we've really seen it was just a few days ago when it got put up. Um, there's definitely some very important issues that um, I mean, is that where Parks and Rec's commission members should go?
Pete, I believe the, the planning committee for this project was selected back in, oh, gosh, like this fall sometime. And it's, it's made up of most community members um who expressed interest and then were selected to be on the committee. So they've already had one meeting or two, two so far. And then they have another one upcoming this week. So that's, that's already mid-process.
At this point, the best thing for people to do is go to the website and start learning about the project if they haven't heard about it yet. Um, you know, we had 50 people, almost 50 people at the public meeting on last night. So that was, that was a well-attended meeting, I'd say. But continue to drive people to the website and that's where they'll get the best information. If they have questions, they'll reach out to us.
And Holly, can you, on a closing note, can you uh let us all know how long this review process is going to, to last? How long are you going to be accepting and taking those surveys and, and feedback?
Until February 18th, 19th, sorry. Um, until February 19th. There's also boards at the Civic Center. Um, so that if for whatever reason, people want to engage with something that's printed out, there's large boards at the Civic Center with the same survey hard copy available there. Um, so you can send people to the Civic Center until February 19th. Um, and then we'll have another public meeting in April based on the results that we see in the next uh, the next few weeks.
And there are, I believe, like comment sheets up at the Civic Center where you can leave your feedback with that and leave it there and it'll all make it to the same place.
Last comment is, is it going to matter what things cost to what we do?
Absolutely. Um, oh yeah, absolutely. So.
That's not my, I'm Parks and Rec Commission. I don't care what it costs. That's city council.
In April, we'll have a very, a more detailed discussion about what things cost.
All right. Thanks, everybody. We got a seven o'clock here. So we're going to take a five-minute break. Yep. Okay. And reset for our regular meeting. Thanks for coming, everyone.
I appreciate all your time so much. Thank you.
Thanks, Holly, Bree, Gabe, Christine and Hunter.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay.
So okay, and the person who's on the phone, you're going to need to log into the other meeting because we're going to end this meeting. You, okay. Oh wait, let me stop recording.
Oh, you remembered to record.